Thank you all for coming this morning and we're going to do the presentations. We have two presentations thank yous to do before we start the meeting. So Les will start his filming when he gets the right connections made. First of all, this morning, it's with great pleasure that I present a thank you to Roxall, the city of Grand Forks. We'd like to express our heartfelt thanks and gratitude for your offering and acceptance of the use of the former Canfor office building, which is under the ownership of Roxall and used for the city's needs. The utilization of this wonderful space has assisted the city immensely in setting, settling back into our local community and government role in the administration, finance, and planning departments. In addition, the building provides a temporary home, which allows council meetings, public interaction to continue at a secure and professional venue. As city presses on with its business as usual and awaits the restoration process of our city hall, our staff is guaranteed secure and very serviceable office and working space, as you can see. In closing, we acknowledge Roxall once more as one of our major pillars in the community, a major industry, a dedicated community participant, and a loyal and caring member of our credible city. And I'm assuming Mr. Holmes is here this morning to accept this on behalf of Roxall. Just like old times.
Just like old times.
Thank you very much from the city. We really appreciate the kind of support you've brought. And secondly, Theresa and Kevin are here. The city of Grand Forks would like to express our gracious thanks to you for offering the use of office space located at 7425 Fifth Street. The utilization of this space has assisted the city immensely in setting, settling back into a local government role in a public service administration and building inspection departments. As the city presses on with the usual, with business as usual and awaits the restoration process at city hall, our staff is guaranteed a service, secure, and serviceable working space. In addition, it is important for us to provide great access and service to our members of the public, and as they go downtown, this is an excellent location for us to work from. In closing, we hereby acknowledge the school districts for its generous ambassadorship and participation of one of our prominent contributors to our fine community. So Theresa and Kevin, can you come forward and I'll give you this thank you from the city?
I'm trying to see what's over here.
Thank you very much Theresa. Thank you. Thank you. Great to know that they come through when we need them. Hopefully, if the school burns down, we'll move men to city hall. All right, I'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order, and my usual speech for those that are staying around is this is a committee of the whole meeting, and so you're welcome to participate from the floor. You can raise your hand and participate in discussions. The agenda is open, so that there are opportunities at the end as usual for people to participate in bringing up other topics. Thank you. And the first item of business is we have a late item for committee of the whole, which is that Mr. Remy Allard, Pato Associates, will be presenting a draft report of the wells and aquifer protection system. And I think you all got that in your hand up. And so a motion to adopt the agenda for this morning, Councilor Doherty. Don't need a second. And petitions and delegations. First of all, it's a pleasure to welcome Andrew Horahan from Interfor. Mr. Horahan is providing a PowerPoint presentation and update on council on the recent activities of Interfor. So welcome, Andrew. And do we have that presentation? Okay, come on up.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to spend a few minutes this morning talking a little bit about Interfor as a company, and a little bit about what we have been doing recently, locally, and as a group, and also talk a little bit about some of our local issues and address any questions council or anyone has on our business. Our goal is to build value in everything we do every day. It's our, one of our core values, and it's what we strive to do every day as a company. We have 2,000 employees in Interfor. We have 13 mills operating. As you can see, down in the bottom right, we have five mills in British Columbia. We have two mills in Washington State, two mills in Oregon State, and four mills down in Georgia. Interfor has grown a lot, and since 2002, Interfor has grown 300% in volume, how we measure our business. We have one of the broadest range of products for any forest products company because we're a coastal manufacturer as well as in Georgia. It's produced something called Southern Yellow Pine, and in British Columbia, we produce all products, which is spruce, fir, cedar, and other things. We sell our products to 30 countries around the world. Locally, Grand Forks, this mill sells most of its products, about 30% to Asia, which consists of about 20% Japan, 10% China, about 20% to Canada, and about 50% to the United States. China is a relatively small market for Grand Forks because of the high value lumber out of this region. Grand Forks is known for a very strong, very good fiber, and China traditionally still looks to secure lower grade fiber, traditionally from northern British Columbia where the non-pine areas. Our lumber capacity is a little over 2.2 billion board feet. Out of that, about 700 million board feet comes from British Columbia. This mill, Grand Forks, next year will do about 200 million board feet of this plant, so about 10% of Interfor. Calcagar is a little larger, but combined, they're about 20% of the company. The B.C. Coast is about 300 million board feet. The Pacific Northwest, which is the four mills in Oregon, Washington, about 650, and our latest acquisition was 500 million board feet down in the state of Georgia. Interfor has changed a lot over the years, even in the time that Interfor has been part of this community. Traditionally, it was a B.C. coastal company, about 80% based in Vancouver area, and today, through transitioning, is a much more diverse group, with about a third of its business in D.C., about a third in the Pacific Northwest, and about a quarter in the Southeast United And it's a very, Interfor is a large growing company. If just in 2010, we were about a billion board feet. Today, we're about 2.2 billion board feet. So in three years, we have doubled the size of our company. Radically transformed over the last 10 years. Key point of Interfor as compared to some other operations is Interfor will traditionally spend the capital resources to build mills and to develop mills that are top quartile or top decile, which means strong earnings, but most important for communities, a stable mill for 15 or 20 years, which is a cycle in our business, hopefully for much longer, but that is a cycle. As far as our communities, one of our core values, we have five core values. One of our core values is to build value for communities by supporting a healthy economy and environment. Developing a strong economy, in our opinion, will develop a stronger community, and taking care of the environment is critical. As far as Grand Forks operation, Interfor acquired the mill in May, 2008, after unfortunate copital, the company Cheryl and Worthfore went bankrupt. It was some difficult times through that bankruptcy, and it was through some difficult times in a very tough market back in 2008 with an older facility. Interfor has invested $30 million in Grand Forks in the last two years, and actually about $35 million over since 2008. The mill today in Grand Forks is a very good mill, a very strong mill. It's both from a safety standpoint, it needs the company in safety, it's a strong environmental performance, and from an earnings standpoint, it's a very strong performing mill. It's a very good operation today by anybody's standards. We took a few pictures. This is our log yard in the left with our cladding, and not something we're proud of, but that was Grand Forks Mill probably two years ago. Today, the log yard is paved, the building is clad. You know, we spent $4 million just fixing up the yards in Grand Forks to make, to get rid of the dust, to get rid of the muck, to get rid of the mess, and we're proud of what we have today compared to what we had two years ago. Today, the inside of the mill, you'll read over and over again, dust is a huge issue in our industry today because of some terrible tragedies in the north. Today, Grand Forks Mill is clean, it's safe, and it's a nice operation, whether that be the planer in the previous picture, the sawmill. And the bottom right picture is the entire site has been paved all around the facility. The cloud is new. I mean, hopefully, it looks like a good neighbor should look. And throughout the facility is a much different, but the four pictures were not pretty. They were tougher for our employees to work in, and they were just a tougher place to We employ 140 people directly in Grand Forks. We have many more that are indirectly, whether it be specifically on the logging side, is all contractor base that don't count in that, the truck driving. It's an enormous spinoff of direct spinoff, forget indirect, but just people that work directly for Interfor through a contractor base. And we run full capacity. We actually run greater than two shifts right now, but it's approximately two shifts in the long picture. And investment, with investment comes productivity. I mean, in 2007, Grand Forks unfortunately ran nothing. 2008, those were the very difficult bankruptcy and transition years, and if you can see, production is how we measure our growth, and it measures our size of our company and the size of each operation. As you can see, Grand Forks is now a small but very strong viable operation. Interfor is committed to the Kootenays, and Cheryl and I both, we work out of Grand Forks, we live here, but we manage an area from, that includes Calcagar and the Calcagar in Grand Forks. In 2008, the acquisition for the Kootenays, the operation we manage, was $71 million. Post-acquisition, Interfor has invested 40.5 million dollars into Grand Forks and spent $14 million in Calcagar. We've also purchased a timber tenure, what we call Springer Creek, which is able to camp for acquisition in Slow Can City, and some working capital, obviously, the logs you see in the lumber. Interfor has invested $155 million since 2008 to become a member of the Kootenays and continues to grow. We like to thank ourselves as a community partner. We're proud to support a number of community initiatives, and we donated $40,000 to the community in 2012 and 2013, and it ranges from Habitat for Humanity down to Food Bank, various donations that we like to thank, we're proud of, are involved in building a stronger We do have local issues. We, in 2013 was the year Grand Forks transitioned their mill from an old mill to a new mill. The two biggest issues we have are dust control and noise abatement. The picture on your right is what we call our Barker Building. It's the newest addition to our land as far as the mill footprint didn't change a heck of a lot, except in this one area, this went to the west, went to the west, about 100 yards. And as you all know, we're very centralized to communities, and when we started the mill in December of 2012, we didn't have a building around the Barker Building, and actually, it wasn't, a building around the Barker Building wasn't part of the first plan, and we realized it was going to be very noisy. So, I mean, we built the building, I think the building started up in May, or was completed and sealed in May. It's now a completely sealed structure. On top of the building for noise abatement, we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on conveyors, filling them with concrete as far as logs dropped, and had conveyors that made a very dull thud. Changed all our backup alarms to these things that sound like not the beep anymore, but like a duck being stepped on. You know, and hopefully, we've made some gains there, but I'm sure we still have work to do, and something we need to partner with our neighbors in the city and others to continue working on. Dust control, again, dust is, because of the amount of pavement we've made, we made big gains on this in the last couple of years, but it's still an area that, normal dust that comes off the logs and forms, we sweep, we water, but it's still, it's still one of our The key point here is the two middle points. We're proud of what we've accomplished at Grand Forks. We're excited about the future of Grand Forks. Grand Forks candidly was a marginal mill for a lot of years, there was a lot of fear that Grand Forks might not be around. Grand Forks today is a very well-capitalized, strong mill. It actually leads our company in earnings, even though it's much smaller than many. The third point, that our company, our employees are valuable contributors to the community. You know, we believe we're here for our employees, and we're here for the community. And the last point is we look forward to continuing to deepen our roots in Grand Forks, growing our relationship with council and the community. And the last slide is that's our product that we're proud of, leaving on our railway that is going to be around for a while, and we're proud of that. Thank you.
I'd love to say we really appreciate you coming and explaining the company to the community and to council. You know, you're a valuable member of our industrial community, and I think the mitigation efforts are really appreciated that you've taken to control dust and sound, but also your contributions to the community right now are also very appreciated. We have a community that needs a lot of help in certain areas, and it, you know, I can tell that you picked the right spots to put your contribution money into. So thank you again from council. Good to have you here. We'd like to have you back on a regular basis so we can keep track of one of our successful businesses. Thank you, Mayor. And council a motion to accept the report? Okay, the next presentation will be the metering, the water metering program. We are, at this point in time... Change of plan. We're going to bring forward Mr. Allard on the well-water protection plan. Mr. Allard, welcome to council.
I'll just, yeah, okay, thank you very much, Your Worship and Council.
With the challenge changing.
I need that. As I was saying, it's nice to be back, Your Worship and Council. I gave a presentation, I think about eight months ago, perhaps a year ago, on the first part of the groundwater work that we were doing for town, working with urban systems on what I would say the management of the system. And this initiative here is more in response to a number of issues that you have to comply with for your operational permit with the Interior Health Authority. I have about eight slides to give here. Let's see if that works and gets me to the first one. Terrific. So the six things which I would like to cover today are why do we need a groundwater protection plan, the history of quality issues and groundwater protection planning in the community of Grand Forks, the current process that we have been going through in order to develop an updated groundwater protection plan for the community. Then I'll show you some graphics about where your wells are located, the capture zones, and the, let's call them potential threats to water quality within those capture zones. Then we're going to talk a little bit about interior health concerns, and there's a couple of acronyms there which are kind of ugly things, and we'll talk very briefly about those. And I'd like to finish off by just talking about how we're moving forward, what our plans are, and those include things like monitoring. We have an emergency response plan, contingency plan, and the whole thing is geared towards having an adaptive management plan for a sustainable and potable water supply for the community. So why do we need a groundwater protection plan for the city of Grand Forks? Well, the first condition, as I mentioned, was it is a requirement on your operational permit that is issued by the Interior Health Authority. The second is, is that you have a wonderful water supply, but your whole city is sitting right on top of it, and so we have to be very careful about protecting that in the long run. There already are some issues in the aquifer. There are nitrate levels which are, have been known for some time. They're relatively stable, but they were identified as an issue quite some time ago, and so we've been monitoring. You're also required under the Public Health Act to protect public health and the environment. And if you think about it, at this point, you've got a long history of using groundwater for water supply in the town, and, you know, the costs of developing an alternate resource and having to treat that would be substantial, so we've got a good thing going here, and it's obviously in our best interest to protect that. The point at the bottom is just driving home that point, that we have already looked at the management of this system from the perspective of how old are your wells, when would they might be replacing, does it make sense to invest in some of the older wells or look at newer wells? We've looked at a lot of different issues in the first study that we did as part of this exercise. So I'd just like to quickly go over the history of groundwater issues and groundwater protection. Let's see if this pointer works here. I love these things because you can tell how nervous a person is for how many cups of coffee they've had in the morning before they get started, so I seem to be doing pretty good here this morning. So we'll go down to the bottom here, and we knew about nitrates in the aquifer here back in about 1971. And quite a few years later, in 1985, it got to the point where the Ministry of Environment actually established a network of wells. They drilled some wells in selected locations, and they used a lot of existing wells in the area, and they developed a network which still exists. In fact, a couple of years ago, I think I said it up here, I did an analysis of that whole network, and we were looking for trends in water quality, see if things were getting worse or better. And I believe in my last presentation, I told council that the nitrate levels are actually stabilized or are actually going down in the areas where you have your city wells. So that's a really good thing. But back in 1985, the ministry established this network, and Grand Forks Irrigation District actually drilled a well in about 1985, and they found a higher than expected level of nitrate in that well. So there was lots of concern starting to develop in and around here. In 1988, the city actually did fairly comprehensive tests on well number two, three, and five, and the levels in those wells were almost non-detect. I think they were around one milligram per liter, which is very low, considering there are other parts of the aquifer that have quite a bit higher than that. And the ministry actually issued their first report in 1992 on this program, which was initiated in 1985, and again, basically said there's some parts of the aquifer that have slightly elevated levels. The city of Grand Forks wells were fine. So unfortunately, in the year 2000 is when this whole Walkerton business happened, and which was, I mean, unbelievably tragic, but it certainly shone a very big flashlight on public water supply that was based on groundwater. And the knee-jerk reaction of that, of course, was the province of British Columbia developed immediately a groundwater protection plan, and they call it the Wellhead Protection Toolkit. And the, whoops, and the Interior Health Authority established what they call the Water Quality Improvement Program, and they were starting to tell our suppliers that you have to develop these plans. And so it's always nice when the government tells you you have to do something, that they also provide funding for it, and the Ministry of Community Services stepped up to the plate and were offering $10,000, $20,000 grants to do the first phase of groundwater protection planning. And the city went through that process in 2004, the first groundwater protection plan, or the first part of a groundwater protection plan was developed. Actually, I worked on that program, and we identified these, what are called capture zones, which is an area around the well that is influenced when it's pumping. It draws water in from different directions, and of course, you want to be cognizant of what type of influences to water quality may exist within those capture zones. And this lady, Lorraine Thompson, back in the day, was a tremendous champion for the whole area here in terms of groundwater protection planning initiatives. Unfortunately, the Grand Forks Groundwater Protection Committee kind of lost some momentum, and between 2004 and 2011, there was lots of ongoing dialogue between city staff, Sasha, and the Interior Health Authority regarding monitoring and chlorination and all of these issues which have come to the forefront. And so in response to that, in 2011, actually probably 2010, we started talking about this, and it's been quite a process. We have been working closely with IHA to develop a good plan that's pragmatic, makes sense, and it's working good. So we currently now have a new groundwater protection plan, a complete plan back in 2004. It was only a partial plan, and we're moving forward with the implementation of that. So just to update the process, so we have, over the years, the amount of water that you're pumping from the different wells has changed. Land use has changed, the designations in your official community plan. There's also been, you know, there's, your community is not unlike any other community. There are the odd little spill that takes place, and we're aware of all of those. We have a tracking system, and I'll show you in a minute, where we have identified all these separate locations that we know something happened, or that we know that there's a potential contaminant there that we're aware of and are monitoring. So we started that in the summer 2012. We met with IHA and city staff. We talked about all these historical issues, and really important, I think, was that we sat down with IHA and said, "Look, where are you now? Where are you going to be six months, or a year, or two years down the road?" We wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page and working together, and things worked out quite well. So in the fall of 2012, we updated your emergency response plans and contingency plans. These are form part of the groundwater protection plan. We went and we updated these potential threats, and we developed a monitoring plan, which is basically to take samples from not only your city wells, but other wells in the area that meshes well with the, this big monitoring network that the Ministry of Environment still maintains. And we want to make sure that we are monitoring for what we need to monitor in the city, and we finished up the groundwater protection plan in the spring, or, sorry, in the winter of last year and the spring of this year, and now we're implementing that. And I just want to drive home this one point down in the bottom here, is that, you know, a plan, a monitored plan, requires that you update it from time to time, and so there is a requirement to submit something to the Interior Health Authority on an annual basis, and I think it's pretty much the results of your water quality monitoring that you've done throughout the year, and anything major that may have happened. And I don't think anything major has happened in the last couple of years in terms of spills or accidents or anything, so. So well locations. I apologize, it's maybe a little bit bright, but, okay, so here's the main coming through town, it goes across... town, it goes across here, and like the hockey arena is raining around here, and here's the old Grand Forks well number one, which is not used anymore, hasn't been used since the 1980s. Number two is on the next road over that runs parallel to the highway here, it's over by the school. That well has been around a long time, I think it's approaching 50 years in age. There are two wells, number four and number five, you can see I'm really shaking now, over in the corner of the park here, they're fairly close to each other, and then down over here, we have well number three and well number three A, which are close to each other as well. The nice thing about this is that, you know, these wells are in a light agricultural area down here, they're on the, well number two is on the border of an agriculture area and residential, and then there is some commercial along the highway here. These wells are over in a park, and number one, which isn't used anymore, of course, is right along the main drain. This well is not used anymore, just so you know. In 1986, there were some hydrocarbons identified in that well, and it was shut down and has not been used since. So I spoke about capture zones. These are the capture zones. So basically, if you recall, I said, it's the area that's influenced when you pump the well. So we combined, because these wells are close to each other, four, five, and three, and three A here, we combine them together to make a capture zone. So this is the area that is influenced for one year of pumping. Now, I don't think there's a well in the system that is pumped anywhere near one year continuously. So these capture zones are conservative, and by that I mean they're larger than what they probably actually are. But you can see that for well three and three A, the capture zone is all through this area. For well number two, that capture zone actually extends over here towards the river. For well number four and five, that capture zone is here. And we've actually proposed at some point in the future, an optional well location, which is down here, and the capture zone for that would go all through here and extend to the river. Now, if you remember, I was saying that we had, we know of where all of the spills or potential contamination threats might exist, and there they all are. And it took quite a bit of effort to dig through different files and find those, and but I want to stress the fact that we don't believe that the wells are particularly vulnerable to anything, but we're cognizant of these issues. So at the end of the day, for example, in well number two here, there are a couple businesses along here that, you know, there's a car dealership and a gas station and whatnot, and we have no evidence of anything in well number two that would suggest that there's any contamination there, but is prudent to monitor. Want to make sure you see anything coming before it gets bad, so you can shut down that well and protect public health. But there's no evidence of anything in well number two of any problems there. There is a little bit of nitrate that we see in that well, but it's very, very low compared to other parts in the aquifer, and it's nowhere near where it triggers any attention under the guidelines for Canadian drinking water quality. Where well number three and three A are here, in fact, I believe down here, these are a couple of farms that have an above-ground storage tank on the edge of their farm building, and that's not a really, really big issue, but we're aware of. So a lot of time was spent trying to identify where all of these issues are. Now, there's lots of things downtown here, old gas stations and dry cleaners and things like that, that, you know, they are not a threat to your wells, but we know where they are, we've identified, and we've shown here that they are not within the capture zones of your wells. So we spent a lot of time working on this and identifying what are the potential threats, where are they in relation to your wells, which ones do we really need to be concerned about, and this has all been put in place in your plan. So now we get to the ugly acronyms. This one here stands for groundwater under the direct influence. What they don't say there is surface water. So in some cases, you can have a well which is very close to a creek or a stream, and when you pump it, for all intents and purposes, you're pulling water from the stream over to the well. The second one here is groundwater at risk of containing pathogens, and by pathogens I mean biological pathogens. That term is mostly used for wells which are extremely shallow, maybe 20 or 30 feet, and you can have a septic field nearby that. And so in the same way that, you know, you're putting water into the ground in a septic field, if you're sucking it over towards a well, then you would think the well would have some vulnerability. The last one here stands for groundwater treatment objectives. We won't spend much time on that, but these two things right here are guidelines that the Interior Health Authority has been developing to help water purveyors identify if their groundwater wells are under threat of having any biological contamination. So we've gone through in the groundwater protection plan and analyzed your wells in relation to these two criteria here, and your wells are not sensitive to groundwater under the direct influence, and they're not sensitive to groundwater at risk of containing pathogens. So not every groundwater protection plan around has gone to that extent, but we saw it coming, based on the dialogue we had with Interior Health, and we looked at your wells according to these criteria. The other interesting thing here is that Interior Health Authority is still requiring that you chlorinate right now. And we believe that if we do more frequent testing at your wells, not necessarily within the distribution, but at the wells directly, we can develop an argument that you won't need to chlorinate. And so we're working towards that. It might take us some time to have so many samples that we have a, what I would call a statistical or a scientifically defendable argument, but that's what we're working towards. There are other tools that we have available, sorry, Doug?
Remi, just to clarify that for the unity, it's a pretty big statement for us to think that IHA would recant an objective. Is there any examples in B.C. where they have actually pulled back on the requirement to chlorinate, and then said, "You know what? You guys have achieved it, now we're going to get to the point where you don't need to disfect your water"? That you're aware of?
Well, I think most of the locations where the bigger systems have been asked to chlorinate is based on a historical incident that happened. So I'm going to use Princeton as an example. Princeton had the one outbreak, and they were required to chlorinate for a while, and then they didn't have to for a while, and now they're back chlorinating again. And there was, I'm not sure how many years ago it was, but there was, we believe, a cross-connection control in the city of Grand Forks, and at the time, there was a lot of dialogue with the Health Authority, and the precautionary agreement there was to go ahead and chlorinate. But there's no evidence to suggest that it was the wells that were the cause of that issue. So that's the argument that we're trying to develop, is that as you sample more, and the more sample results you have that don't show there's a problem, we have a statistical argument that we can develop. And, you know, I can't say for certainty that IHA would relax that condition, but, you know, we would have a statistical argument that would support it.
I think that's important for us to understand that where we've gathered that data to do that, that IHA more than likely won't roll it back, but at least if there is a change in their regulatory requirements, that we'd have the data to do that, to demonstrate that.
Yeah. So, you know, I guess you do have to give kudos to Interior Health, you know, they're trying to protect public health, and they have lots of ideas, and I would say that we're all learning as we go along, you know, communities, consultants, and Interior Health Authority, and, but the proof is in the pudding, you know, they can, and that, I think that's the way they're going with this groundwater treatment objective here. This is a new document, another one that's in draft form, these things are still in draft, by the way, but they tend with Interior Health to take draft documents and roll them into working documents. And so it's good for us to be involved in development of these guidelines that we have, but this last one here, this groundwater treatment objectives, we don't know exactly where it's going, but at the end of the day, I think that, you know, the city of Grand Forks wells are not particularly vulnerable, and that if they go in this direction, I think, you know, through testing, we'll be able to prove even more so that they're not that vulnerable. Okay, so moving forward, these are basically concepts that we have discussed with Interior Health Authority, and so we are recommending that we need increased monitoring for these biological pathogens, and you've heard these names before, like E. coli and coliform bacteria, et cetera, that's what we're talking about here, is to do more frequent sampling of this at the well to support this statistical argument that it's not your wells, it was a cross-connection control that we had one issue with a few years back. We think that you need to do, when I say increased monitoring here, I think you do a full potability every couple of years on each well, maybe once a year?
Once a year for the matrix.
For the full suite of potability indicators. It's only prudent because of the history of nitrates in the aquifer in the area that you have some increased monitoring for nitrate, and particularly for well number two, petroleum hydrocarbons, and that's a real simple task, you do it once or twice a year, it doesn't cost a whole lot of money, but, you know, it just makes sense to stay on top of that and monitor. Now, Urban Systems has been working on this larger study, and we've had some input in that. At some point down the road, well number two is your oldest well, and it's starting to show signs of age, and eventually it's going to need to get replaced. And you could probably drill another well very close to that and have a much more valuable asset in the long run that'll be constructed to more current standards and be a better water supply well for you. And the same thing eventually will apply to number three, but we like to move number three a little bit so that it's not so close to three A, because when they operate at the same time, they influence each other, i.e. they cause each other's water levels to drop. And if you want to think of growth of the system and meeting demand in the future, if you can find a new spot to put number three where it's a little further away from three A and they don't influence each other, you're going to have more water. Number one at the hockey arena is that old well that was shut down because of the hydrocarbons. It's still being used to monitor what's happening in the aquifer, so it's still an asset in that regard. At some point in the future, though, it probably should be decommissioned. And you'll notice here, we haven't linked a timeline to any of these, we're just saying, you know, they should be done eventually. Down at the bottom here, implement bylaws for the protection of groundwater. So for example, what we're saying here is that, you know, you have your planning and your OCP process, when you have applications being made for subdivision, et cetera, you should reference back to the groundwater protection plan. You don't want to put septic fields in within your wellhead capture zones, you don't want to put storm disposal to ground within your wellhead capture zone. So it's important to keep the protection of groundwater, be cognizant of that in the background, so that your future planning is going to protect the sustainability and quality of your water supply. It's always a good idea to increase your public awareness and engage other groundwater purveyors on common groundwater protection planning effort. To be blunt, it would be really good if the groundwater protection committee that used to exist in the valley could at least sit down at the table and talk about common issues. The city of Grand Forks is in good shape, but with all of these emerging goodies and GARPs and groundwater treatment objectives, I think it's important for everybody to share all that knowledge and work together for the benefit of the aquifer. These emergency response plans, you know, they need to be updated annually or changed, you know, people are constantly moving around. Sasha and I were talking about, in the last, what, 10 years, you've probably had six different drinking water officers from Interior Health that you've had to deal with. Things change, so in order for that emergency response plan to be effective, you need to have that contact list at hand and ready to execute, so that you can shut down wells and react efficiently if you ever do have an issue. Thank God we haven't, but if you ever do, you've got to be prepared. And probably the most important thing that we have to take home here is this whole thing about annual reporting, and here's the buzzword of the day, it's this adaptive management. Who knows what kind of curveballs are going to get thrown at us, and, you know, if you monitor and are cognizant of what's happening, you can adapt to change. And that's basically a good summary of what we've done with the groundwater protection plan. I've probably gone over my time here by about five minutes, but if there's time for questions, I can certainly take them.
Mr. Allen, again, we will. Counsel.
Can you explain to me what, when you say a well ages, or a well has become at the end of its useful span, you know, in perception, is it a hole in the ground?
Okay, if you can imagine, you've got, you've got two types of steel in the ground. You've got casing, which is like black steel, and you've got stainless steel well screens. And because of the different types of steel, it's like a battery in the ground. One behaves as a cathode, one behaves as an anode. And within the well, you've got a static or a non-pumping water level, and then you've got a pumping water level, and this thing goes up and down every time you turn the pump off. And in that interval between the pumping and the non-pumping, or the pumping and the non-pumping water level, you've also got oxygen that comes in, you've got current, you've got metal, you get spalling occurring, you get pieces of the inside of the casing fall, they just drop off and they fall to the bottom of the well. So over 30, 40, 50 years, the casing will actually start to develop holes in it, in that interval between the non-pumping and the pumping water level. So that's one thing that happens. The other thing that happens is, as the water comes through the screen, from the aquifer through the screens down in the bottom of the well into the well, there's a whole pile of weird stuff that happens. There's a pressure change, there is a change, well, it's difficult to explain, but what happens is the screens become clogged. You get precipitation of iron and manganese, and it starts to clog the screens, and so you have to go in every once in a while and knock that stuff off and clean out the well. And every time you clean out the well, you pull a little bit of pieces of aquifer through, and if you do that every five or 10 years, how many times can you do that before you take away so much material that the land starts to kind of subside around the well casing? So that happens, and then sometimes after a while, you know, you can try as you might, but you can't get the well back to be as efficient as it was when it first started. It's no different than a young guy being able to go run a marathon, and an old guy can't do it because it gets hard on your heart, okay? The well starts to lose its efficiency with time, and you get to a point where you're better to go drill another one, rather than spend all that effort more frequently to try and get it back to normal.
Kevlar Dory.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Eventually, the city is going to put in water meters. Will that sort some of the problems?
Well, we would call that demand-side management, and I'm sure Doug could speak more eloquently to that than I can, but at the end of the day, of course, it would. I mean, if you can reduce your consumption, then you don't need to develop as much water to meet that demand.
Yeah.
So demand-side management is the cheapest water you're ever going to get, because saving it doesn't really cost much money, does it? And I guess the only way you're going to do that is with metering.
Thank you.
So I can see the headline, "City of Grand Forks No Longer Has to Chlorinate", it seems, and, you know, I share Doug's concern that we've not raised false hopes. Is it not true that the rest of the question is in our own system internally, in our own distribution system, like you said, a cross-connection? You know, what we heard some years back was that we have various faults in our system related to age and deterioration, and it may not be quite as simple a matter as saying it's clean coming from the wells. Can you explain that a little more in terms of the cross-section component?
Well, you know, again, Doug could probably speak more eloquently than I could on this issue, but cross-connection control has been a really big thing in the last 10 years or so. And, you know, I guess where I'm coming from is that, you know, you can take it out of the ground here at a source which is not vulnerable, and if on the way to delivering it to your customers, you have the cross-connection control or something happens, you know, what you don't want to have is somebody come and say, "Just because you have a problem, it has to be at the source." Because, you know, if you have implemented a good cross-connection control program and you reduce the potential for those things to happen, and don't forget that you're always going to need to chlorinate in your distribution system. I don't think there's any way you're going to get around the secondary residual level that you have to maintain in your distribution system. Well, what we're trying to say here is that we don't think your source is vulnerable. So, you know, don't necessarily blame it on the wells, and, you know, if it is a cross-connection control, you can solve it and fix it and eliminate that potential threat. It's not the source where the problem lies.
And I think just to add to that, I think one of the things, there's so many vulnerabilities out there that we're not aware of. For instance, people tapping into fire hydrants... For instance, people tapping into fire hydrants without a permit, that may have been using that water to flush a sewer system. Fire departments, for instance, you know, if they're drawing water out of the river and then they go tap into the water system, a potable water system, they go from a non-potable supply into a potable supply, that becomes a risk. So all those, there's so many factors, and I think what Remi was talking about, is just simply identifying the source is the area, is something that we're, we can probably rule it out as being the source, as being a contaminant level. The water quality coming out of the aquifer is going to be such that there is really minor, no risk from a bacteriological perspective. I think where our risks lie in how we use it, and when people are dropping a hose into their pool, when they're flushing sewer lines, or they're, you know, maybe for instance, if there's been a cross-connection in a home from a plumbing apparatus that nobody's aware of, there's so many different factors out there that we can't control. And I think the mayor is right, we probably won't see it come back, but I think that Remi's analysis of our water is proving to be perfect when it's coming out of the ground for us.
Yeah. You're really very fortunate, you have a wonderful supply.
Yeah.
For the questions. Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept, I think, Council Doherty, follows in favor.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Allen.
Do you want to do the water metering at this point?
Sure, do you want to have a quick break?
Do you want to do a quick break here and then we'll come back for the water metering?
Sure.
10 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. All this meeting back to order. And the first item of business is a presentation from staff on the water metering program and a request for early budget approval for this along with a number of other ones that we're looking at today. But the report is quite comprehensive and goes into everything that we started and where we're going, so I'll take it to Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we are going to talk today a little bit about the water metering, and I think the demand management component of what we've talked about today with, after Mr. Allen presented to us. It's important that we understand why we're doing this and where we're going with this. So the program need is for us to deliver safe, reliable drinking water, the key goal for achieving the healthy, viable community, but ultimately, we're looking at our demand management. And overall, it's going to produce a water consumption, we're going to reduce our water consumption, we're going to reduce our energy requirements for, because all of our water is drawn out of the well, it requires a significant amount of energy to pump the water out. The sizing in the future of our water infrastructure, by simply going to water meters, it's going to save us several millions of dollars in the long run because we won't have to oversize our pipe for future demand, our future demands of the city. If we're managing our water the way that we need to manage it properly, it's going to allow us to save millions of dollars. Equity billing, people will pay what they use for, it won't be a one system fits all, it'll be more of a system that is, is you pay for what you use. And I think that's the same lines along with DC gas, your energy that you buy in your home, everything is equitable billing these days. A pain that effective information management tool for supply of our distribution system, what that will do is allow us to gather the information for determining where we are going in the future. And it is, we heard from the senior level of government that if we don't have a water metering program in place, we won't qualify for a grant. That was made very clear to us at the asset management presentation that the mayor provided, but ultimately Glenn Brown from the ministry has said that you don't even apply if you don't have a water metering program in place. So the water metering program is going to mean us having the opportunity to access multiple millions of dollars. So the program structure, this is a little bit small, but what we are to do, what we're going to do in the first step is we're going to go through the policies, the policy and the strategy, the metering, budget and finance. Wait. The meter budgeting and finance, so we're going to have to go through the budgeting and process and financing, the technologies and the standards, customer service and communications. And this is going to be a big step for us is to have a couple of open houses regarding the communications of the project, and that's going to happen over this fall and the winter of 2014. The procurement and installation, we're going to do the, develop the contract specifications after councils made the decision if they want to go forward with this project. We're going to go through the procurement process, which is going to take several weeks. We would expect to have the tender developed and hope for public input at that point, sorry, for public bidding in January. The administration and installation, we have several things to do there. Customer service and communications, again, through 2014, 2015, it's going to be an ongoing process for us to work with our customers. And all of our customers aren't particularly happy at the onset of this, but I think through the education component, they will definitely understand the savings to the community and the impact on our watershed, on our wells, the Kettle River Watershed Study, they're going to understand how this all ties together, and I think that the work that regional districts doing is going to really help tie this all together. And then the ongoing meter management, the demand management component of this, we should be able to save the life of our infrastructure, we should be able to save money for the municipality in the long run. Meter testing and accuracy, we'll get to that point on how the meter testing is done, and it is a very effective program. The billing rate and design, that's going to come back to council and have a lot of, we'd recommend that we have a lot of community input on that. The design and how the bills are created, you know, with people wanting to grow vegetables in their backyard, how are they going to be impacted? How much water do they need for their lawns? What do the statistics tell us? Performance and monitoring, how's the program working, and ongoing communications. So the first phase, we went through that, that would happen over the fall and winter of this fall and early winter of 2014. The goals and objectives are outlined there. We'd have to go into the organizational impact, there's going to be a big impact on our organization. This is not a small undertaking for us to undertake. The ownership and the financing, how have we been, who's been owning the meters? How are they going to be replaced in the future? What type of meters do we want to have? Do we want them integrated with our electrical program? What type of information do we want to obtain from our meters? So all these different things are going to have to be thought through, but we're going to go through that, and fortunately for us, our chief financial officer has been involved with all of those processes, and myself have been involved, and we have a strong team to bring this forward, so. The procurement phase, so this is the part where we get into the procurement and installation. So once we've made the decision, if council's made the decision to move forward, we're going to the installation. We have to prepare the tender and evaluate and award. Detail of scheduling and planning with our customers, is when are these meters going to go in and how are they going to go in? How do our customers make an appointment for them going in? How do our installers work within our community needs? Customer service, again, this is all going to be about customer service and communications. The installation of water meters is very easy, it's understanding the information that comes from the water meters that's important for our customers to know, and know why this is undertaken. The meter management, so the water utility audits, what this is going to do at the end of years, each year we'll be able to audit our system and better understand where our water is being used, better understand if we have losses within our system and need to be identified. Meter testing and repairs, it's going to help us from a maintenance perspective. Information management, billing rate, design, financial management, we're going to be able to have a self-funding utility that won't be based off of, based off our operational history, it'll be based off of our actual needs from our billing management system. And again, it'll help us better perform smarter in our operations and better reporting and communications back outside of our organization when we're reporting on this. So the first steps are going to be to allocate the budget, determine the sculpting of resources required, along with that is going to be the communications, establishing our water bylaws, develop the staff and council policy, for staff to work with council on developing that policy, because a policy is going to have to be in place for staff to understand how to work with it and what council really wants us to do. And then identify the preferred technology. There's so many different technologies out there, and we're going to have to make sure that we get the right technology for our needs. You know, is it going to be off a rooftop that's going to continually gather the information? Are we going to drive around obtaining information from the trucks? We have all these different options for us. So today, as we go through this, Committee of the Whole is, it's been recommendations for Committee of the Whole to recommend council for early budget approval for the initiation of the comprehensive water metering program and the desired approach relating to this report. And ultimately, we're going to have to have this funded from the gas tax funding. Because this program is going to be $1.3 million is what we're estimating, we get that, we get approximately, Roxanne's, about $300,000 a year from gas tax funding?
Yeah.
So we get that payment back based on, from the, through the gas tax funding program, and this won't have a direct impact on our taxpayers. This is money that is coming back into the gas tax funding, so it won't affect any taxation rates. It'll be funding that's specifically allocated for these things. The provincial government has said to us and through the gas tax funding that you can use this gas tax funding, but you can only use it for these specific things. So this is the process that we have to use for reducing carbon, your carbon footprint, it has to be, has to have green technology associated with it. So it won't just stress back to our customers, there will be no financial impact to them on taxation as a result of this. And that is the information.
One of the things I'm sure to be asked right away by someone is how smart will the meters be? And have you got any thought at this point in terms of what technology you would prefer? Because I think it will be a sensitive issue for some parts of the population.
So the meters, yes, a great question because the meters are pretty smart. They send out a signal every 30 seconds. The signal is a 900 megahertz signal, which is a signal that is old technology from a telephone. It will send it out to a, tell us backflow incidents, it'll tell you leak, leak problem. So for instance, if your toilet is running, it'll send a signal, send us a signal back to the billing program that'll tell you that your toilet's running, and then our staff will be able to go to that home and say to that customer, "Oh, it appears you might have a running toilet, maybe, you know, you might need to change your toilet, maybe you need to flage your toilets." It'll start to tell you those things. It'll tell you backflow incidences. So when we're having situations where we had, in our community, where we potentially had a cross-connection issue, when we have a situation in our policy where somebody's got backflow issues, where they've got higher pressure inside their home than we do in the distribution system, we'll be able to identify those critical areas in the community. The meters are, they're very smart, but they're not going to go in and tell us, you know, they're not going to tell what appliances people are using and those types of things. They're going to tell us that people are tampering with the meters, they're going to tell us that people have leaks in their homes or leaks in their yards. The information that we're looking to obtain is simply for our water system and demand management, it's not meant for getting into private issues for people, it's simply demand management. And it'll help people save money, is what the ultimate goal for this is. People that are using, you know, for instance, wanting to leave taps on in the wintertime because they think the line might freeze, well, maybe they'll have to find a permanent solution rather than simply leaving the tap on and every taxpayer in the community paying for that to happen. You know, they'll be their own responsibilities. It'll save us money in chlorine consumption, it'll save us money in actual, our overall needs as a community, so, from a water distribution perspective. So, but the information is simply related to demand management and protection.
Counselor Crowe.
Yeah, the difference, I thought that that's where the mayor was going, is the controversies surrounding smart meters and the health, the health effects that some people are claiming that go along with smart meters. So the difference between that type of meter and the meter that we have, like you mentioned, the 900.
Yes.
So is there other, you know, major differences so that people aren't concerned and lump them together?
Yeah, these, I've been to this question in other communities when we implemented, actually several communities, and the answer to it was, these are no different, the energy systems that come from these things, the battery power, has less impact than most handheld or remote control devices in people's homes. This sends a certain amount of signal through our room here now. The impacts, the safety impacts, the health impacts, there is no known direct health impacts from cordless phones in the homes, so it's just having another cordless phone in your home. The customers, our customers and our policy will have an option, I would recommend to council that we have an option, that people can have a pit meter installed if they have, if they have big concerns, that they could have a pit meter installed at their property line, they would have to pay for the difference for it, but they could have a pit meter installed at the property line if they had major health concerns.
What's their complaint?
So a pit meter would be where the curb stop is at the property line, it'll be a bonnet approximately two feet across, it'll be at the surface of the ground, and in that will be the water meter, and it'll send a signal from there rather than inside the house. Typically, the meters are caught in your, in your, close to where your hot water tank will be in your home, and they would be somewhere in that area, and they would be sending that signal out from the transmitter off of that into your, so our meter reader will pick it up, because our meter reader goes around in our vehicle, and it's no bigger than a laptop computer, and sits there and sends a signal, we gather those, the signals from every home. And that's how we populate our bills. So the health effects of that, I had a nine-page letter that I responded to a customer on that went through all the facts in another community, and it was, there is no proven health impact on that.
So if I change the channel on the TV, I won't change my consumption rates?
No.
Yes. Jack-in.
Counselor Wires and Counselor Wishag.
To our CEO, how do we, how do we work with the community on wells, old wells that are on their properties that they might start initiating or they're temporarily, you know, decommissioned and they think, well, or even drilling one? How are we going to, how do we know what's out there now?
And there's a reality that I think we all understand, that we can't know everything. Customers are going to do things that, you know, they may be entitled to, but if they're tapping in a well and the provincial government, they're not authorized to tap in a well, the provincial government finds that, they'll be subject to the fines under the groundwater under the, under the act. So they would be subject to those fines. If you're not entitled to tap, have a well on your property, if it goes against IHA regulations, there would be, there would be fines. It'd be no different than the city, because the city has real people powers or real person powers, we can't simply just go tap in a well without doing a proper research on that. People are going to do things, I've seen a situation where people have their old pumps in the rivers and they want to hear deep their yards from there. I've seen people that have rainwater barrels that aren't, that weren't approved, this is old, this is back many years when we didn't look at that as forward-thinking, but those things weren't approved and people looked at those negatively. People looked at using septic tanks as holding tanks for the roof water, and that was looked at negatively. Now people are starting to really embrace these ideas that people have. So I guess the short answer is we will never know everything, but there has to be a plan in place, and I think that's where we have to talk to the people in the Kettle River Watershed Study, how we are going to manage the water in our region, and how does that look, and there has to be a long-term plan for that. And that could be 10, 15 years.
Counselor Wishag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been opposed to water metering for, well, forever. However, as pressure is mounting, I do, and I have changed my opinion somewhat on them. However, my question is, why universal metering when other communities, why this approach? There's other approaches such as voluntary metering, such as Surrey, Richmond, Castigar have done in the past. Some communities, obviously Burnaby, Tatchung, Langley, don't have water meters. Vancouver does, and only on new buildings. Langley does have water metering. So there's different approaches to do it, on new builds, voluntary or universal, so forcing people. I know there are quite a few people in this community that are opposed to them. I'm not necessarily sure that I'm in favor of universal metering at this point. I would be more, it'd be more palatable to have voluntary metering. So my question is, why universal as opposed to possibly holding an open house to see how the community feels, to see if they want to do a voluntary process, if we could put on new builds first? There are other options, is what I'm saying, and I'm just curious as to why this and why we couldn't get more community involvement in the process.
Sure, and I guess the one answer to that, the one aspect to that question is why, you know, where we are already. We have water meters on all of our commercial operations. The last component for us now is to obtain the water metering information for our homes. The reason that some communities are further behind is they're just simply not that far along in their asset management programs. One thing we've recognized in our, in our asset management program is we do have an aging infrastructure in our community, and we have to start replacing some of this stuff. If we replace it without proper information, we're going to have to oversize it and pay more, which is going to cost our customers more, and they're going to have to service that debt as part of the community, it's going to cost them more in taxation. The water metering will save them millions of dollars. Just by, if, for instance, if we just reduce our consumption by 25%, we can imagine that our water mains would have to be a certain size smaller, so therefore we'd be replacing tomorrow for smaller water mains and in the future with smaller water mains as we move through that. So the other communities that are doing this, they're probably not as far along, well, actually, I know they're not as far along in their asset management plan because to simply do this, to simply, to do volunteer water metering is going to leave that hot. The other piece is it creates an equitable and fair process. Could we imagine our Could we imagine our community if we said, okay, everybody pays $500 for electrical, no matter how much you use? You have one neighbor that leaves the lights on, and leaves the heat on, and does all that. Meanwhile, you're being conservative in your home and keeping the heat turned down and keeping it at a manageable level, but everybody's paying $500. That's the same thing with water meters, is we've done this with electrical, we've done this with our gas utility, we've done this with all these things, and it creates an equitable system. So those that literally want to save money and reduce their carbon footprint on the, on earth, they can actually do that, and know they're not subsidizing the person across the street that's got the hose going and the sprinkler going on the lawn when they don't, it's not necessarily needed and is proved by science. And it creates a balanced system for our customers. And I think that's what our customers will appreciate more is there'd be a genuine opportunity for them to save money. And what I've found is that our, that customers do want that. They want to know that it's a fair process for them. So, but the communication piece is going to be big. So the other options that exist out there with voluntary, volunteer metering, not going to universal water metering, I think it just delays the inevitable process to get into universal water metering. So, and the term universal is, I guess it's interpreted in different ways too. I mean, we're just simply going to be having all of our water accounted for in our community.
Counselor Croft.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
No, Mike had a reconsideration here.
Oh, okay.
Well, not necessarily reconsideration, but I just want to, Bramford's is not the only community that has the problems with having an infrastructure deficit at all. And you're absolutely right when you speak about the possible, well, almost guaranteed savings that are applicable to those in smaller households. Like I'm looking right now at a, for the city of Richmond here, who does have universal water metering, and they have a flat rate, and essentially what it's showing me is that per household, like a one-person household, they pay a flat fee, or they did, without a meter, pay a flat fee of $953.43. With a meter, they're now paying $207.15. They're saving $750 roughly a year. However, there's not very many people that live in big houses that are single. So the concern that I also have though is those, as we try to attract families, there are more bodies in that house. So if you play a flat, a flat fee, there's going to be that level where there is a savings, and there's going to be a level where there isn't. So in fact, there is a possibility that, let's say you have six people living in your house, there is that possibility that your rates will go up.
And just to, so I would like to put it in perspective, almost as we go through the community, to put in perspective of the community, seven to 10% of your overall water consumption is done, used on cooking, cleaning, washing your laundry, bathing and showering and all those things. So that's, so give you an example, in the Okanagan, when I had my, all my, I went to water metering, I paid $100 a day for my water. That's after metering went into play. Where our water is being lost is on outside irrigation. Forty percent of our water that goes through our water system that we chlorinate and that we distribute and we pay high, we use, we have a high carbon footprint related to it, is related to outside irrigation. Those are the proven areas. So what we, what we know is, is that the inside, the water used inside the home today, out of all the water that's used inside one of these homes, it should have a negligible effect. So if I was to use an example, a cubic meter of water, this is how water is metered, a cubic meter of water is 1,000 liters of water. That's 54 of those mounted units that go on those dispensers, 54 of those. So in the Okanagan, we were at, say, I think, other communities were a dollar a cubic meter. So that's 54, that's 1,000 liters of water. It's 2,000 water bottles that you go into the store and pay a dollar for. It is, it's 220 gallons of water. So when we put it into perspective, how much water do we need to shower and bathe and do those things? It's negligible, but every drop counts, and I think that's what we're trying to get to here, is understand that the aquifer will not last forever. This is the legacy that this community is going to leave to protect the Kettle River water, or the Kettle River aquifer, the aquifer that we're looking at. And this is going to be the city Bramford's component to that. So, so our customers are going to save, and they're going to be passing on the legacy to the future. So I, I see the need for it, but ultimately, it becomes a decision of council. Council decides, they don't think it's important, but I think that through the education process, everybody will see in the community that it is important. And I guarantee you, there is going to be those that aren't happy with it. I know it for a fact. But I know that it does have its benefits, and I know that once everybody understands the process, and people start to really buy it, and you see the experience in the community.
Counselor Croft.
Yeah, just, you've answered, you've answered a part of the question I was going to ask, which was perspective-wise and costing, and Michael pointed out the one in Richmond. Obviously, ours will be different, but then we, in a city like Richmond, there's huge houses and large families. Here, we do have a high proportionate senior population, so they're, you know, they're older houses and smaller families and stuff, but we look forward to the growth with more families coming in. Could you just kind of go over, not so much a timeline, but how the system would work? So the meters go in, the grace period, the billing?
Okay. So what I would recommend to council is, we have to, the first step is, in the budget process, we have to analyze kind of what the cost of running utilities is. Then what we do is we mock bill for a year. So we put the water meters in, and I recommend to council, go to a mock billing period for a year, so people can understand their, their use patterns. So we can see what happens in the quarter one, and quarter two, and quarter three, and quarter four. Quarters one and quarters four are what you need to live off of. So we take away quarter two, which is starting in April, and then quarter three ends in October or September. But what happens, though, is in those other winter months, it tells us what we need for, for our indoor habits. So people start to learn what they're doing, and then they learn what's happening outside in their yards. So we start to educate the community around that. So when the, when we do the mock billing, so people have the opportunity to touch bases with our staff, and the customers come in, they talk to us about, about their water use, and what they can do to, to curb those, maybe overconsumption. For instance, an example of it would be the education process in the communications here. We'd give, maybe do a communication where we had a frisbee. Throw your frisbee on your lawn, once a week, that's all you need. Once the sprinkler fills up, the top of your frisbee's full of water, that's all the water you need. That's an angle that we do with our customers, letting them know, this is the science finding. Get a tuna can, put it on your grass, as soon as you have, as soon as it's full, that's all the water your yard needs. There's this misconception that we have to put the water cannons on the yard and let them run for 24 hours, and that, you know, that we have to flood it. So what we'll do is, staff is, we'll bring forward all the science, and there is so much science behind this, but it is going to be an ongoing process. So, so we go into this, we install the meters, if council decides to do it, then we go through our, our mock billing period, and then what we do is along that, that's the ongoing communications. That's when we talk to our customers about, about this process. An example of the story, we talked about the seniors, was I had a senior come up to me and pitched on and say to me, he was out, he was writing letters in the newspaper, and I said to him, he said, he's one person, I said, I guarantee you that if your water bill does not go down, if you do not pay less, I'll buy you dinner. I said, I guarantee you this, because based on your, telling me what you do, you don't do any sprinkling in your yard, and you were paying $350 for the year, his went down to $219. He came back to me, he had to buy me dinner, but then I moved, and we didn't get to take him up my dinner. But this is the fact, is when we have these pieces and people come forward with these facts, people are still going to use water, and they're going to use a lot of water. But there's going to be others that are going to say, I'm saving. Am I rewarded for that? And the reward process will be obvious.
All right, counsel. Ready to receive this and recommend this to tonight's meeting of November the 12th, regular counsel. Counselor Wires, all those in favor? We don't second that.
I know.
It's hard to break old habits.
I know.
So, Mr. Mayor, do you have the recommendation to, to recommend that you fund it from the gas tax reserve?
We just bring it.
All bring it forward.
Yeah, that's okay.
I don't think it's feeling good enough.
Okay. Oh, sir. Thank you, counsel. The next item of business is the community events, community events and organizational support policy. This is a second kick at the can. We sent it back, and it's come back with some, I think, some improvements on it, for those of you that have had an opportunity to read it. Are we, are we looking at a presentation on this this evening, Mr. Allen?
I think the, I think at this point right now, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple of points in the policy that our corporate officer has highlighted that, that are open for discussion today, and I think that what we want to do is have a bit of a discussion on a couple of the items. And Diane, do we have that ready to go? We had a couple of the highlighted areas that we're going to counsel to.
Yes, I'm just trying to get this on full screen here.
So just to let counsel know, we've had limited requests. Now, the council does not have a grant to make policy. The fact that you rescinded your policy, it's actually worked in a, well, it's reduced the number of grant to need requests. So just to let counsel know that the fact that you don't have a policy, you haven't had a lot of requests, so that's still an option for you to, to stay down this road, that that's what's working. So I don't know if it's working in the respect that, from the community's perspective, but I know that from the council's perspective, we haven't had the requests.
I've had an opportunity to go over and memorize it by heart, and I think it's, it's going to work. I think we should give it a try, so I'm open to discussion here. Counselor Doherty?
Oh, we're moving.
Move the referral to tonight's meeting. Any further questions?
We haven't had a question.
Well, we've just had the referral, I haven't voted on it.
Well, can we speak to it?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just confused in the sense, I like the event host and the hosting funds. The, one thing I do note is that it appears that there's a lot of staff time that will go into this, it looks like. Maybe I'm wrong in determining grants that will be applicable to certain groups if they come forward.
Assistant groups with search for other grants?
Yeah.
I thought they limited that quite nicely in the wording in there, though, that they were.
Well, they would also have to look for their own as well. They would have to show that, but.
They're not going to do it for them, but they're going to support them doing it.
Well, number one, policy provision of information regarding grant opportunities. The city of Bramford's website will include a page dedicated to community and organizational grant funding opportunities that intends to provide links to current grant information. So somebody would have to be always updating that, so this page stays current, so those groups can look at it. I'm just concerned that that's going to take up some grant or time, it's going to take staff time to, to do that, and maybe Diane can contribute.
Your worship, most of the grant portions that we would be linking would be the governmental parts that would be coming from the province and that, and so it wouldn't be a, it continues, usually the granting is on quarterly basis, and so what we would be doing is staff is grabbing that information on a quarterly basis as it comes in, and it would just be updated on the website, so it.
So you're not seeing it as an onerous.
No, no, it's not going to take too much time, it's just a matter of grabbing the updated information as, as it comes in.
Okay, and in further to that, that alleviates that concern, absolutely. But in as much as there's quite a few different aspects to this, like one, two, and my things I'm looking here, there's a bunch of different headings. Is this an and/or or altogether policy? Like, are you looking at, as it is presented right now, is it like, looking at using one, just, just that aspect, or are you looking at all of it? Is this policy going to be, we're going to put this on the website, we're also going to do the in-kind services, we're also going to do the event hosting, we're also going to do this? Or do we pick which ones we want? How is this presented in that way?
Your worship, it's basically, what we're presenting to council is that these are basically modules that you could actually remove out of the policy if you wanted. A lot of the highlights in here of all the different kinds of funding options could remain as the policy, and it's council's choice not to fund them if they don't want to, or if there's, you know, no funding opportunities for that particular time. And so the policy is meant for council to choose where they want to put the funding at a, at whatever annual budgeting process. And so, and if there was something that they didn't agree on, you could actually take and remove it right out of the policy altogether, so. But a lot of the support funding will come from the budgeting process, and as to how much funding would be available for that particular year, it would be council's choice to say, okay, we want.
In different categories.
Yeah, so we, we maybe want to put X amount of dollars for fees for service, X amount for event hosting, but maybe you don't want to put any funds in for an umbrella organization, so it's council's choice is where they want to.
But the option is still open there in the wording if we wanted to.
Absolutely.
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, I think that's just further to what I was sort of saying, that in the budget process, when we have the committee of the whole process, council will be making that decision, okay, here's your, here's the pot of money that you had last year that you allocated to this, do you want to move it around a little bit? How do you want to deal with that? How do you think that things work? Because, again, I don't think, I'd like to say that we're going to get it right the first time, but I can't guarantee that. I think that council will always have that ability to put money in where they think that they need to happen. And from year to year, this happens, I mean, there's different needs that come up, for instance, the San Maria is in our community, next year, council might want to do a little bit more in the way of super hosting something, you know, something along those lines. So that would be the launch.
Yes, and so I see also there's more attention paid to budgeting for the in-kind participation of the city in all events, so that we'd be seeing a budget figure at this point that you're putting forward that would incorporate the in-kind. Counselor Wushai.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do apologize for being so talkative this morning, it's my, my daughter's sick, so I'm not to shuffle make tonight's meeting. So I want to get these questions answered now, so I know. In regards to the non-monetary city support organizations, letter B, it says, "Support letters to organizations and groups." That city council authorize city staff to provide letters of support in an ongoing basis, I guess it would be certain requirements. These letters, when these groups approach city hall to have letters of support written, do we, as a council, approve the writing of that letter, or the staff have the ability to say yes or no to letters, or do they say yes to all, or yes to some?
Let me answer that one. I mean, we've been at times really bogged down with requests from people that have to wait to a council meeting for us to give formal permission. I would sign the letters for the most part, although they have my signature on file, but these are motherhood issues where there's no question of whether or not in good governance and community, we wouldn't sign a support letter. So anything controversial in terms of support, I would expect to come back to a formal meeting of council, but, you know, for all of the standing small groups that we recognize in our community, it just smooth, it just makes the process a lot smoother. Is that not the purpose of?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not cherry picking, is all I'm being at.
No, not at all. That's it?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, so Counselor Croft, sorry. You were so quiet.
I know, that's, I'm spiriting through with Michael, so that always suspects it. Okay, when I look at page eight, which is conclusions, and it talks about what we're going to recommend to council, provincial and federal grant access, and it says, "Direct staff to gather the information." So I see it, and had concerns similar to what the other counselors were saying, is how much staff time? But when I look at it, it's like, okay, these are the grants that are going to be available, so we get that info, and if somebody comes in, yeah, this is where you should go. So it's not like every time somebody shows up, we have Sarah or somebody, you know, spending hours researching, because we've already done, done that as a almost, you know, constant thing. Letters of support, I've always been in favor of to organizations, and that would be recommendation number two or whatever. Three was the use of umbrella organizations, and I've been a strong advocate for that, that we can fund a group, and then they can fund the people that belong to that group for the organizations. And fees for service, I've always been an advocate for. Grant and aid, I've always said that I do not believe in grant and aid. These, even though some people may say it's different wording, but to me, it's different concepts. So I support these, I see that there may be some tweaking needed to be done to them and stuff like that, and it is taxpayers' dollars. It's not the city saying, oh, here, you can have this money and you can have this. It's us on behalf of the taxpayers saying, yes, you can have this, this funding, or you meet those requirements for this funding. So other organizations, like if, if the taxpayers spend $200,000 maintaining an arena or an aquatic center or whatever, then, then a group that uses that, that also wants funding, you know, is that fair? Are they doing double, especially if it runs in a deficit and stuff like that?
I don't see, Counsel, that this document will solve those issues for us. I think there's always going to be certain subjectivity to how we interpret them, and we always have to remember that in the right situation, we can break our own rules and adjust our policy, but this gives us a center line anyway of how to. But this gives us a center line anyway of how to consider some of the requests that we are getting forward.
Yeah.
But again, it's not gonna take away the trivia that you're gonna have to look at in a very subjective manner.
But, and that's sort of my point too, and that's why I support it. But if we can outline it more, so it's more definitive, then people will know that. And I like the parts that require people to be looking for other sources of funding and stuff, rather than just first stop, city, second stop, regional district, which actually the city is part of the regional district. So if all the rules are super clear, then it works. And then the community spirit event funding program, I'm in favor of that. I would keep in mind that some of the anchor programs or the anchor events, if you've been doing an annual event for 10 years or 15 years, you would think that you wouldn't need that extra funding for the taxpayer. But a lot of those anchor events take a lot of in-kind services. And then they say, well, you didn't give me any cash, but you actually used up, you know, $30,000 worth of taxpayers' money through city services. And as long as that's clear to everybody as well, but to get new events, I think, would be a total bonus.
Well, and I think this gives us an opportunity to do just that, to look at how much we budget. That's gonna be the tricky part for staff, is how to budget for this. But I think it's a document that's worth working with at this point. They brought up your point of sophistication, and I think it will only get better. Remember what we had before, it was really pretty dismal, and led to a lot of conflict at this table, so. So on the floor, is to recommend it to tonight's meeting? I thought it said to 12. Okay, to November 25th, all right, all those in favor? Carrie, thanks. And the next item is the calendar of meetings, which is a requirement, statutory requirement. And this would also be referred to the November 25th regular council meeting for confirmation. Motion by Councilor Doherty, all those in favor? Carrie? And the next is an opportunity for a new player at the table, Mr. Reed, to talk about snow cleaning and roads. So this is of great interest to the community at this time of year when they look at how we set our priorities for both roads and sidewalks. So we'll probably just roll both these items into your presentation here. So first, starting with cleaning roads.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for blessed viewers out there, I'm David Reed, and I work for the City of Grand Forks for the Roads Department. So the first slide here shows the priority ones for the roads to clear, and it's in the blue. So they're kinda hard to see, but basically it takes care of the Grandy and Valley Heights and Second Street. The main feeders, like the hospital, and going from Central up to North Fork and 68th Avenue down to basically Fifth Street on the top of City Hall there. So this is them listed, I guess, in order which they get cleared. There's two trucks, so this is both the north and the south side of Central, it's kinda how they're broken up. They're listed out here, so everybody knows what the priority ones are and the priority twos. Kind of go down to the city-owned parking lots and the general residential streets, which may get done at the same time, just due to the equipment that we have and the people that we have out. But that would only be done during the week.
And just to add, there's different factors that affect the snow removal. So we have the priority ones set by the council policy. The other things that impact this would be vehicle breakdowns, the amount of snow, does it keep snowing once we keep it going, so our customers are getting cold. But these, this is how we get to these, we don't always get to them in a timely fashion because it's additional snowfall.
So this is one of the, I believe this one's a 1989 cloud truck that we have, we have one or two, and then we have one. So if we send out two cloud trucks for two inches of snow to do the priority ones, it takes about two and a half hours for both trucks.
That's a very fast move, right?
Yeah, that's two inches. You know, like Doug was mentioning, if there's an accumulation of a foot of snow, and you're trying to feather out six inches of snow, it takes a bit more time. We do take two passes on each street to open them up for various reasons. We've tried just doing the center, we've tried doing just one pass on the edge, and found the two passes, you're able to sneak over in the intersections and take away some of the snow bridges and highs where people are trying to get out onto the main roads, and it seems to make things a bit safer and keep the public a bit happier, so.
We all know it doesn't snow the same amount in every street in town, and so it's always a little bit different, so.
It's surprising, there's quite a fluctuation from the west to downtown.
Sidewalk, please.
So, actually, can we go back one?
Sure.
Yeah, so the two and a half hours is just for priority ones. So that would be a call in the weekend would take two and a half hours or during the week. And then to do the rest of the streets completely, it takes the two trucks about two days to get through and do every street in town.
That's an important piece for our customers, to know that we are gonna get there. It's just that we have to hit the priority one routes first, that would be for ambulance, for fire department, for... You know, and then some people say, well, maybe you don't remove the snow on my street because I don't like the way you do it. Well, we have to do it for delivery of goods, movement of other people, of people coming into your neighborhood.
So this slide is the priority ones for the sidewalks snow removal, and that's showing in green. We did some work on this, I think it was last year, just because we had priority ones and everybody wanted their sidewalk as a priority one. So if you sent a machine out, it would be like eight hours for priority ones. So we kinda scaled it down, so. Go to the next slide. This is them, it's called out again.
So, and just to deal with this here on this slide here, council has the right to make these decisions on this. So when we bring forward the policy and the suggestions, this impacts the amount of money that we spend each year on snow removal. So we can let these wait a little longer, we can actually ask the residents to clear the snow from their sidewalks in front of their homes. There's all kinds of different ways we can do this, and we can have a snow busters program, we can save money as a community, but this does have an operational cost to it.
So these are basically the two key machines that take care of the trails in the sidewalk. On the left is what we call the holder, and it does basically the sidewalks because it's a bit narrower. And then the new addition is the Kubota on the right, and it has a blade and a sander to do the trails in the wider sidewalks. So if we sent out just the holder to do the priority ones, it takes about three hours. And then to do all the sidewalks in town, it takes about two and a half to three days depending on, again, the snow amount. And part of that is not to create windrows right through the intersections that have just been plowed. So every road that they come to off the edge of the sidewalk, they push it and then they back up, and then they clear it off to the side so that there's, you know, not the windrows from either the trucks, so people can't get walkers or their chairs out, or even have trouble just stepping over some of the windrows. But also, it doesn't create the hazard in the intersections where the cars trying to get over to the main streets. So this is the current policy again, the traditional snow removal, which encompasses the airport. So we do have anywhere from, I think it's been as low as maybe 18 medevacs a year and as high as 40, 45 per year. So when we go out and clear the runway, it takes, you know, probably two, probably three hours tops to make sure that airplanes can get in and land safely. We do that with a smaller dump truck with a, you know, fairly big front plow and a broom to keep the ice off the runway. So if it snows more than four inches, even if it is still snowing and clear, just because it takes that much more time to open it up for medevac. And then there's some special considerations with the weather, if it's gonna freeze during the night, and it's melted during the day, we'll go up there and bloom it off and keep care of it. So this is a view of the runway from on the left there of the cloud truck that we use. And then like I mentioned, it's carrying a broom or dragging a broom behind it to sweep also. And then there's some parking with one of the airplanes that come in. So yeah, it takes about three hours, like I said, and it's about two and a half to three days to do all the parking areas and taxiways and to clear the streets and everything for the fire department. With the downtown core, we've tried a few different methods of trying to clear that. It's kind of a unique situation, just with people parking and merchants and trying to clear the sidewalks and keep the drains clear downtown. So we're gonna try something different this year. Doug's come up with a plan to bring in casuals in the evening, do a night shift. So we're gonna try a few different situations and see what we can do to, I guess, get better service for the downtown merchants and see if we can have some cost savings there also.
The other thing that we'd like to remind the merchants to do is clear the snow from sidewalks in front of the businesses, but also to expect that the drain closer, if we see it clogging, you know, put a broom handle in there, just gonna break it so that the snow can get through, so we don't get the water accumulating. Our guys will get to it, it's just a matter of priorities when they can get there, so we don't get the big puddle, so it's better service for the customers.
So this is some of the equipment we use. On the left there, there's our John Deere loader, which we call the V blade on the front, which can either windrow either way or come together to carry snow. And then in the past, we've used the machine on the right, it's a, I think a 1973 snow blower that came from an airport, it removes the windrows from the center of the street. So that's, yeah, I spoke about the casuals. We're gonna try some different things in the downtown core this year.
So the casuals will be coming in, we have, they would be on standby through the winter months, and then what would happen is if we had a snowfall, the public works coordinator would coordinate them to come in that evening to do the snow removal in the downtown core, and that'd be part of regular hours rather than us paying overtime. It'll be a cost savings to the city, and we'll also employ, potentially employ more people in our community with no impact to the budget. So that's what we're looking at, how do we serve our customers better in the downtown core? And when we come downtown in the middle of the night at 1:00, there's no cars. So it's a perfect opportunity for us to close a section of the road and not impact any merchants. Mr. Mayor, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, just a question, and I've always been curious about this. When I was going to school at UBC, I managed a theater in Kitzallano, I also lived in Kitzallano. And while I didn't snow much in Vancouver, it was a requirement of the business owner or whoever was to clean the sidewalk in front of their building, as well as in front of my house. And if I didn't do that by, I think it was like 10, 11 o'clock in the morning, there was a possibility of being fined. Whose responsibility is it to clear the downtown sidewalks? Is it the business owner themselves, is it the city? What's... Like, I understand in residential areas, being that we're not as urbanized as some areas, it would be difficult to expect that a homeowner would clear their spots because it would quite honestly be, impossible to be swatted, that wouldn't be cleared in front of vacant lots, for instance. But in the downtown core, where it's more, I can't think of the word, but...
I think the policy is clear that the residents in our, our transfer to, I can't remember the name of the bylaw, but the residents are responsible for the frontage of their homes. They're responsible for the weed control and everything in the frontage of their homes.
Okay.
And that's in our roads, our roads by law. The snow removal in front of the businesses, it is the business's responsibility to remove the snow. We're gonna come through there because we have to pass by and hold off on a little material and tidy it up, but it's their responsibility to get the snow out of the way. The same is the responsibility for you in front of your home to get the snow off your sidewalk in front of your home, as per our traffic regulation, by the way.
Okay.
That is the initial response for the customer, so that's what they're looking for. Because city staff, you know, we're gonna look at this from the weekend, and we're gonna say to council, do you, you know, and part of our policy is making that determination, do we wanna send out a crew at double time to remove, move snow off the sidewalks? I mean, that's a level of service that we can take it up that high, because customers can have whatever they want, it's just a matter of what can you afford? And we talked about this in asset management. We will get there, but you're right, it is a responsibility of the businesses to clear the sidewalk in front of the business. We wanna work better with the downtown merchants, understand kind of what they're looking at. If we can develop that relationship, and we can start to understand and communicate a little bit better, we can help them as well. Part of the helping them is understanding, you know, what time are we coming through? Because if we're driving by to go somewhere, well, we can drop our blade down the door. I mean, that's not a big deal for us to do that on our route. But are we gonna make six or seven passes at that point? No, no, we can't do that. And that's probably, and that's why the routes are established the way they were for the other trucks, is to make sure we can get the priority stuff.
And the reason I ask that is just a couple of years ago there, I was asked by a business owner in the downtown core as to why the city hadn't come through and cleaned their sidewalk. They were upset that people were walking through the muck in front of their business. And I really didn't have an answer for them. I assumed it was their responsibility to clean that snow off in front of their business, and to complain to the city about it was... So that answers that question for sure.
But it's an important piece, though, that when customers have concerns or feel... You know, we can bring this back to council for ongoing dialogue on it, but I think the other piece that's important is that they do let us know, so we can track the customer complaints and concerns, so we can develop a policy. Because if we have a policy that's just this way, and we developed it in, I don't know, 2005, and we don't evolve, we're not meeting the needs of our customers, our current needs of our customers. So as part of this process is to get the information, but also to get the right point of communication. And that point of communication is for them to call into public works, and the receptionist will take the information and we'll track that information.
Councilor Cruck?
Yeah, do we have any systems in place for when things ice over, especially the sidewalks? Like, we'll plow the sidewalks and, you know, the priorities and stuff like that, but then occasionally we get almost like an ice storm. So what do we use? Is it just sand? Is that what we're doing?
Well, downtown's kind of an interesting one, because the store owners are supposed to take care of their sidewalk. So we do driveway drops, so we will drive by and make one pass on our way to the next driveway drop, and we'll sand on the way there. On the rest of the sidewalks, we do a special mix of, it's a smaller size sand compared to what we use on the roads. We use an ice melt that goes down to, I think it's minus 30 or 25. So we mix that, and that goes out in the holder. And then the guys will go out in the pickups and with bags of this ice melt, and they'll do the drops that maybe have water sitting in the bottom, or they have straight sand, but they'll sprinkle in problem areas. So that's part of the service that we provide with the priority ones, we make sure that ice control is in there.
Okay, and second, just a follow-up. I promise that if the city does put a sidewalk in front of my house, I will shovel it. Just let it know.
We've been asked to clear the helipad at the hospital?
No, there's been no, there's been no request for us to do that now. Okay. Of hospitals, challenges.
Yeah, so these I'm gonna go through one by one, because they're some of the key things that we hear back from the public. So the biggest one that we hear feedback about is the windrows and the boulevards that interfere with driveway entrances. And like Doug said, we have the ability to go clear every driveway, but it's gonna be a long mission. You know, now, this time of year, people are happy to see the snow, it's heavy, but they're just happy to see it. February, different stories, they don't wanna see it anymore, and they're tired of windrows. So we tend to get more complaints later in the year about that one. Drainage in the downtown core... Drainage in the downtown core, the business owners do shovel the sidewalk, but there's no real place to put it except for the parking stalls. So I think Doug touched on it, we need some better communication with business owners and how they can help us and how we can help them not prying two feet of snow on the drains and stuff will be helpful in that respect. And hooking a broom handle in the drain if it is starting to collect a bit of water just to get it going into the drain. Public parking on boulevards and dead end streets, Wayne has been good at helping us out in cars who aren't licensed and things like that.
That's an important one for us to stay on topic because one car can, or two cars, can affect the whole street and the customer feedback that we get. So we are going to be proactive in letting the customer know to get their vehicles off the road. And if they're not moved and they're not licensed, that the bylaw officer will be there to give them the ticket. And then eventually they'll have to be towed, but we don't want to get them to the tow point. We're going to communicate with them to get it off the street.
I mean, you still get some people that will put their car in the street so that they don't get snow in their driveway, which, you know, we just go around, but it leaves a dead mess in the street.
I'm one of those guys.
Apartment parking in the downtown core. This week, we have a sign system set up so we deliver signs to the same spot when we're going to clear the downtown every time so people know where to put it, where to look for the signs. It seemed to work well in the last couple of years, so we're going to continue doing that, especially with the casuals, you know, going to move downtown on different areas at different times. So we'll be on topic here. Continuing snow and stats of the weekends, it's been an area of concern for some residents that I think we just need to better communicate. Like Doug said, it takes time to get there and we're going to get there, but if it snows Thursday and then it snows again on Friday and we go to redo the priority ones to keep them clear, we might not get to some spots until Tuesday morning possibly. So there is a bit of a lag time and we've heard complaints where, you know, we may not have got to some of the side streets in Runkell and people have let us know. But I think with better communication, you know, get a better understanding of that.
I've got a question for you. Coming from Saskatchewan, windrows in driveways was a big issue. The plow trucks in Saskatoon used to have just a wing that dropped down as you went by the driveway, you just dropped the wing and that took the windrow. And I'm just wondering if we've looked at adding that piece of equipment to the existing trucks as a potential option in the future? Because that would alleviate a lot of the complaints and issues.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know that maybe that's what's happened here.
Yeah, we have looked at that. We had an articulating blade which, you know, really slowed things down, but it was more for the one-way streets or different areas to help plow, wasn't really to deal with driveways. I don't, we had to take that off because the down pressure was so poor that it wasn't doing its job. So we don't have any blades right now that articulate. It's all, it goes off on the right side of the street. We haven't really done a lot in the way of wings. The Grader has a wing, but that's only, you know, in extreme snow build-up places. It would slow things down. We have a certain speed that we follow right now because we have boulevards that are, you know, so wide in different areas and you don't want your snow zone where it comes off the blade to go into the sidewalk or whatever. So it kind of dictates how fast you can go. But this, again, you would have to add some time for sure.
And there's other things we have to consider, too. People finish their boulevards right up to the edge of the road. So as we start winging in there, we can start picking up bricks that may be in the, coming out to the street. They might have plants, they might have irrigation. So we have to consider all those different things as we're doing this. We, you know, we'd like to be able to cheer pick them off, but at the end of the spring, when we start going too far into the boulevard, we start to get the calls, hey, you ripped apart my lawn, hey, you pulled up my driveway, or hey, you broke my asphalt in my driveway. So our costs are going up, not only from the operational end of things, but now it's on the repairing things because now the customers are coming back and saying, you did this damage, so therefore I need you to call me next before. So, you know, it is an ongoing issue with those windrows. It's never going to go away. One of the things that's always nice though is when you see neighbors that pick it up for other neighbors, they can't do that. It's a bit of a snowmuster program where they go out and they help them. But it is important for us to know that's, that's the reality of the phase.
Another issue that we have is properties with alley access. Example of this is Upper Riverside Drive. There's quite a few properties that you have to go into the alleys for access. So it kind of throws our priorities off. We try to keep the alleys for the last, but some jump ahead just because that's there with the access. And it's not really a luxury, it's a necessity to have them clear enough so that they can get through because most of them are very narrow.
But just one thing on the windrow piece. It's important, too, for our customers not to get mad at the city and throw it back out in the middle of the road because that creates an ice slick, which is a dangerous situation. So if the fire department or ambulance is responding, it creates another level of ice because we've gone through and we've treated the road. And it's going to be so important that our customers don't pile it out in the road because the guys aren't doing it with the intention of blocking in the driveway. They're trying to make access for all of our customers. And when the ambulance is called or the fire department is called, we want to make sure that they can get there in a safe manner. We don't want them putting ice on top of the magnesium chloride or the calcium chloride or the salt and sand that's been applied to the road. So if they are frustrated, just please give us a call and put the snow off to the side and we'll see if we can do it.
We also have some concerns, noise in the early morning. This is with plowing our priority ones or example of the equipment backup alarms downtown. We've had some issues because they are loud, they're made for people to hear them and get out of the way and people don't want to hear them initially. So we need to look at that stepping on the duck backup alarm. Andrew Orner was talking about earlier.
To duck?
Yeah. Cul-de-sacs, snow removal is a bit of an issue, too. We have to pilot in the center because a lot of the cul-de-sacs have the sidewalk right up to the edge. So there's not a boulevard to plow off for the signs. We pilot up and then we end up hauling away to different dump areas depending on the location. We try not to dump in areas that are going to cause situations. We've had some concerns from residents behind E and W on 17th Street at low water levels. We don't dump any snow above there that will drain into there. We take it behind Vegas McDonald's ballpark and we have a spot for downtown at the Thrifton Properties down on 8th Street against the Nondre. So a few different areas that we use, the airports and everyone. Old sidewalks that are narrow for equipment. We have some of these that are downtown. Probably the most infamous one is right by Boundary Lodge. That were the drive. It's pretty narrow and you can't get either the whole door that could hold on there because it's narrow. So we end up doing, we do the bridges and we do the smaller sidewalks with handrails like down 72nd. There's an old sidewalk that's probably six feet off the ground and people have their rock walls there and then we have handrails. So you can't get a machine down there, so we use the snowboard. So a person carrying sidewalks takes care of certain steps and narrow spots like that with the snowboard.
And then the wear and tear on operators is an important piece. As the season rolls on, everybody's fatigued, a lot of times because we all know that it doesn't snow on Monday to Friday, 7:00 to 3:30. It only snows on the weekends and stat holidays and those types of things. So everybody's tired at this point. Come February, the operators are exhausted, they lose a lot of overtime. And it's important that the customers know that, too, because they're exhausted, too, from the onboard shoveling. So none of us can wait for spring to come when it's coming. But it's just important for us to recognize, too, that our operators are susceptible to the injuries from sitting in the vehicles for long periods of time. And then also the uneven roads and stuff that we do have and the backups and sometimes a manhole that, you know, you wouldn't recognize this, but a little chunk of steel sticking up this far out of the ground, they throw an operator right into the windshield or jerk them forward in a big wave. These are things that we constantly work on, but were affected by our normal operation. So day to day, there is impacts on the operators and it's important that we do work with them on trying to find solutions. And then the sidewalk obstructions, when people are putting extension cords up to their vehicles and stuff, you know, they have to be cognizant of the fact that we're coming down there potentially with our unit and we might rip stuff out, but they're putting it there at their own risk. If they're going to put those sidewalks or those cords out there, they're going to cross roads and vehicles, we don't recommend it. And we are going to stop and unplug them and pull them out of the way because they are a trip hazard, they are a risk level to the community, and they're potentially a fire hazard. And any citizen walking by through the cord that's not CSA approved can potentially be a risk to any one of our customers or a pet. So we will be addressing those as we see them. And I should say thank you today for putting this together. You did a good job of covering it.
Thank you, David. Counselor in to accept the report or further questions, Counselor?
No, move to accept the report.
And so moved, all those in favor?
And then question. Because we're in the COWC, we're COWA, meeting and we can have public input and stuff. I was just wondering if before we went into the fire department report, we could see if there was, I don't know, anyone in the gallery that maybe wanted to invite us to an event and could do that and then be on their way without sitting through the rest of this.
That'd probably be referring to me.
Yes.
Thank you, Neil. James, again, from the Mountain Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. Formally, just invite everybody here to our AGM tomorrow night. Thank you, Neil, for the add-in. Starts at 5:30. It's at Gallery Two. There'll be, you know, the general meeting going through and then we'll have hors d'oeuvres and refreshments after that. So please feel welcome to come. The other thing I want to actually do, too, is thank the council and mayor for the swag, like what council member Kendall's wearing. I had that and a white shirt and a bunch of pins when I was in China. And I was able to hand out tons of pins. It was quite a crowd pleaser with the kids. They love little pins. It was kind of neat to, everywhere I went, Grand Forks. And I wore those shirts proud and I have some pictures on Facebook with me wearing them on purpose for that reason and to show off that I'm from Grand Forks and it was a good time. China, it's incredible. It's not like Grand Forks. There is 20 million people in Beijing and that's about the population of Canada, give or take a million. And concrete buildings and the food and people, and they like to yell even though they're not yelling at you. They just talk like that, so I was told. What else went on? Saw the Great Wall of China, which is amazing. I highly recommend if anybody gets a chance to see that, like seeing how that came about and hiking up there. I met some business contacts through the Pearl Factory and a Jade Factory and, you know, they're interested in working with us, but I don't know what level theirs, but we also made contact with the Travel Agency and they're really interested in working with the Grand Forks and with the Mountain Chamber of Commerce to offer the trip for people here to go on it and as well, maybe some potential people coming to this area, the Boundary area, to see what we have to offer. But that's in time. I'll have to work with that a bit. Otherwise, thank you for the swag and the opportunity to support me there. So thank you.
You can stay.
I'll be missing that tonight, but I hope other counselors are there. We're heading down to see Minister.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, tomorrow. Yeah. I know. Sure. Okay. And reports and discussion, the monthly reports from department heads. Mr. Allen, how do you proceed with this?
Sure. I just want to say that we have the, we have the fire department report here. If there's any questions we have on that, but we can give a bit of an overview that we had, the fire department had 36 calls. They had the fire prevention leak on October 6th and 12th. The guard volunteered, participated in a smoke protector campaign. They met with the, obviously setting up the rotary fire safety plan. And then the fire inspections. Our chief was at the information officer, course and trail. This is part of the EOC development for communications training of that. Deputy chief attended the occupational health and safety conference as part of the role for the fire department for our organization, is providing occupational health and safety. And they had a joint fire practice with Big White on October 23rd. And then right now, we're working on the aerial RFP for the ladder trucks. We're going to attempt to ascertain the amount of money that we're going to need to bring forward to council as part of the budget process. And we're letting these out for budget requests on it so we can understand and we'll bring it back to council and understand. We're expecting that shortly. The CFO, the Chief Financial Officer, was there any questions on the fire department, Mr. Mayor? Ask you, okay? So the Chief Financial Officer has been working on the replacement of the assets from the city hall. Obviously, the casual capital asset policy and the training with the organization is a very big component of what we're working on right now. The training is ongoing so we can understand how to meet our legislative obligations and train our team to understand the council policy. Also, we're working very hard on the budget amendment, which is before you today, and also preparations for the budget process. And we've been very, working hard on that. And then the insurance claims, we've had a few insurance claims that we've had to deal with. So the fire situation has taken up an awful lot of our Chief Financial Officer's time and it's been, she's done a very good job of keeping it together during this process because it's a, it's an ongoing project that now we're going to start to hear some challenges from the insurance company on different things. We're going to be, we're going to have conversations about value and things. So I think that's where we're going to be developing that relationship with the council. Is there any questions on?
Just since you brought that up, I think best counsel and probably the public, what's the progress on?
Sure. I can update you right now. We've had a, we're meeting with the insurance adjuster tomorrow. They're bringing us a check for $100,000. That'll be covering some of the costs that we've incurred during the moving for purchasing of new stuff and all these pieces. Then we're going to be, what they do now is they finish off the schedule of quantities. So what happens is they've had to go back and meet an environmental restoration process. So they're at the point now where they're determining the levels of lead paint and the final quantities. So then what they do is they create almost like a tender and they get three prices on it. So then they'll come back to us with an amount of money that they feel as though they should give us as a settlement. And then what we would do is we would tender it through our tender process. So we will tender that out, but we have to agree on the dollar value of that first. So what we're doing on our side right now is we're scheduling the setup of the floor analysis for the restoration. Then what we're going to be doing is going through, we're going to hire somebody to work with us on, through our insurance, that we have coverage for that. We're going to have somebody look at our, the prices they give us because we're going to be talking, it's several hundreds of thousands of dollars, we imagine. We want to make sure that we don't get shortchanged on anything. And then we'll have that discussion and then we'll have them, then once we finally come to an agreement, they'll cut us the check on it. They'll be out of the picture and we'll be into full tendering and restoration. So we're still a few weeks away from that process. They have a team from Calgary that's come in, and I believe they're coming in still to analyze the space and to come up with the amounts of money that we have. But it's not a, it's not going to be a quick process. What I'm learning through this, through the insurance process is they want to make sure they get it all right first and then we have to be okay with it. And we're going to hire somebody to make sure that we're okay with it because it's not something that I want to do off the side of our desk. I want to make sure that we have somebody that's dedicated to it. But that's covered under our insurance.
Well, speaking aside of your desk, I mean, is there any desks that are salvageable that you can use over here instead of these tables that really aren't meant for computer work?
We've looked at that and we've talked about this from a staff perspective during the amount of time that we're spending at these things. We're just trying to understand how much longer we're going to be because once we get the timing in the city hall, then we'll have, like, in the next few weeks, we should understand our timing. And then we'll know better what, you know, what other type of investment we'd like to make. Because there is another cost to bring the equipment in here and then moving it out. So we're trying to make sure that we don't spend all of the insurance money that we were allocated for this component for temporary services. We want to make sure we get into the permanent asset. So an example is, the city hall, underneath the carpet, there was hardwood flooring. Well, the insurance adjuster said, well, that was your subfloor, so therefore we only want to replace the subfloor. want to replace the subfloor. And I said respectfully, that was hardwood flooring, so I would just ask that we get hardwood flooring. If we're not using hardwood flooring, that doesn't mean that we still don't have hardwood. So these are gonna be the pieces that we're going to be negotiating, and it'll go on for a little while. So, I'll expect a full, a full report for council here as soon as I get the quantities, and then I'll deliver for the, for the community through a full report in council. Probably have the 25th meeting or the first meeting in December. Mr. Mayor, we can move on to the Manager of Engineering. We have the downtown beautification process, we're near completion of the first phase, and I don't know if everybody's seen the brickwork and stuff around the trees and the cracks and the replacements, I think it looks, the final touches have looked really nice down there, lots of positive feedback. Here's, the liquor store project is nearing completion. The manager's been working on a few of the final reports that are due to council here in November. The Transcendental Trail project, that project's been complete, we're just waiting to talk about the, working with the MLA and the federal government on a ribbon cutting ceremony for that. A long list of other projects, and also she attended the MADDY Communication Planning Training, so, or Community Planning, that's an important course for her to have a continuing education on.
What is the MADDY?
The MADDY was Community Planning, so it was a week-long dealing with Community Planning issues, training related to development permits, land use, just different processes, legislative processes.
So is that an acronym?
MADDY, yes, MADDY is.
Technical, Management, Technical.
Is that through Capella University?
Yes, it is.
Administration of what?
Administrative, Technical.
Now, the MADDY programs are probably the most intense programs you'll go through, you'll go for a week of 14 hours a day, because you're trying to cram a university credit course into a week. The Building Inspector and Biolo Officer, Mr. Mayor, we've, we're working on the deer, deer bylaw, deer feeding bylaw, following up on bylaw complaints, Building Inspector program, Building Inspector permits, Building Inspection permits, the new garage. We've issued building permits for over half a billion dollars since July, which is very positive, is one of our local economy. And continuing on with the education on that course, or the Building Inspector's course. Corporate Services, again, working on all the different aspects of corporate administration, but I think the biggest piece is bringing our organization into a greater level of organization. The Corporate Officer has been working on, and I don't think it's outlined very, in much depth here, but the software program to make sure that we have everything filed electronically and in the proper access, so we can find everything properly. What we're missing in our organization is just a continuity, and it's a big piece for them to be working on right now, and I think they're doing a very good job on pulling this together. It'll streamline our organization into a more effective operation. I believe that is, that is, Mr. Mayor, the Public Works Report is missing this month, and we'll have that available for next month.
Thank you. Motion to accept the reports from administration. Counselor Wachag, all those in favor? Okay, we're moving on to the Chief Financial Officers, Financial Plan Amendment bylaw. When you read this, you'll see that there are a lot of things that we have previously decided on, that we were moving forward in our financial plan or changing, and this basically brings that all together, and we're looking for a motion to bring that to the regular meeting of council November 25th. On the table, any questions? Counselor Wachag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do recall these all coming forward as separate items, and this is just, I guess, a housekeeping measure in regards to adjusting the budget. The funded from, actually, just out of curiosity, because I can't remember everything, I try, but I can't, the $78,470 that's coming out of the slag reserve, what was that for? Was that the slag that the study, or what was?
Which one?
Well, it says where the expenditures, and then below it says funded from $20,000 from general surplus, then surplus and slag reserve, there's $78,470 coming out of the slag reserve, but I know there'll be somebody who will call me and ask why money's being spent on the slag reserve, as they always do.
Mr. Mayor, the 68 was for the trail project.
The trail project.
And the balance was for the highway signs, because you said in the capital project that we were, we were gonna be hoping to receive money from the credit union, but that wasn't that, so what we said was if we didn't get that, we would have to fund it from.
So it's two figures?
So it's two figures, yeah.
And if those fall within the legacy, I suppose, so.
Certainly.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, motion to accept, sending it to the 25th meeting. All those in favor? And the next item is the deer feeding bylaw. Again, the committee of the hold is to recommend this to the 25th regular meeting of council. And can I have any comments or discussion on this matter? Counselor Crowe?
3.3 of the bylaw, it talks about salt licks.
Yes.
It talks about, and I guess the previous one, 3.2, which has to, and uses the words occupied, let's see, blah, blah, no person shall be permitted to place a salt lick on the property he or she occupies as a permanent or semi-permanent place of residence to feed deer. So 3.2 shall permit deer to be fed on the property, but I don't, it says that people can't put the food on their property, but it doesn't say that they can't set up a feeding station across the road from the property.
Can I ask for some clarification on that?
Sure. I'd refer that to.
Mr. Copan?
Yeah, Mayor, council, that, if the property across the road, or that would become a city property, a boulevard?
Okay.
So then, we wouldn't allow the food or feed to be put out on municipal property. So this speaks to the residential property.
Okay, and so vacant lots that belong to somebody else, possibly, and it's next door to the guy's house, so he takes all his food over there, because he can't put it on his own property.
Mr. Allen, have you got the answer on that one?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that we, if we're going to put a fine against somebody's property, it has to be doing something on their property. If they're breaking the law kind of outside of their property, we can't, we don't have a mechanism to go after them and arrest and do those types of things. That's when we're bringing in the Conservation Officer to let them know that those things are happening. But when it ties to a specific property, if we're gonna put it to taxes and it's gonna be, come up in the tax sale for delinquent, delinquency on a fine, then we can tie it specifically to the property.
Counselor Wachag?
One moment. Mr. Allen, just said what I was gonna say, but just out of curiosity here, and I can't seem to see fined, and I know the previous incarnation of this feeding bylaw had no teeth to it, and I can't see that this one does either.
Well, the fines are down further.
Yeah, section. Section 4.2 addresses the schedule.
$50 for the first.
And then, then it goes to the back page, which is the actual schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just out of curiosity, more so, I guess, anything, the salt lick issue, the 3.3 that appears to be new to this bylaw, why are we picking out one situation in as much salt licks, whereas the rest is very vague and very, why, why is all this fall within section 3.1?
Okay, if you go back to the first page under food, we put a definition in there describing all types of food, because the food was not in there originally, and it was very vague as to what was food. And a salt lick is a specific item that people place out for livestock in normal situations, but we have situations where they are placed out in town on properties for deer.
Getting that, I guess, is that managing the warehouse there for farms for a few years back, I know that quite a few people go in there to buy feed, not for livestock, they're buying it certainly specifically for deer. They do sell salt licks there, but they also sell always barley core mix, and I just, I am worried that there could be an argument made that you're being specific to one and not to the other, therefore I will not pay for this, because this is a livestock issue, Phil Zar.
Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, it's a good point, and I think the council's really good point, and I think in our definitions, we refer to food. So I think that one of the things that we probably want to do as a housekeeping enemy is bring this bylaw, or just correct against feedback, is call that food, just refer to it as food, not necessarily a salt lick, but just refer to it as food, because under the definitions of food, food means food waste, any other materials that are, is or likely to be in attractor for deer, for examples, fruits, vegetables, hay grain, and the salt lick. So we've got, we've got to find it's food, so I think maybe we just need to clarify that piece, take salt lick out and refer to it as food.
Can I appreciate the fact you've gone more specific on, I think that's a big question. Further questions?
Thank you.
And talking to Mr. Copan, it looks like our chronic offenders will be notified by, in a letter, and that they will be invited before their fine to come before council and argue their position, so look forward to that. Mr.?
Mr. Rutter's name? Okay, is there a one-day exclusion from the feeding of the survey day or survey deer family, as reindeer do fall under that? And if the little kids leave out carrots for the reindeer, are they in contravention for a bylaw?
I believe that that would be a council decision.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is an exciting development, I have to say, I was the one who promoted this bylaw without any fines in it, and so, Mayor Calpa, I thought people were more responsible than that. We'll see how this works. And so the motion is to recommend this to the meeting of the November 25th regular meeting of council. Counselor Wachag, and all those in favor? Carrie. Information items, the schedule for our financial plan, basically laying out the timeframes for this, and the motion is to receive for information. Counselor Udory, any questions on that schedule of how the financial plan moves forward to the progress? Hearing none, all those in favor? And the next item is a declaration by Counselor Smith. This is, as a requirement of doing business openly with the city, and I believe that this will be on tonight's council meeting, November the 12th, so we are moving this to our regular meeting this evening, which will be chaired by Counselor Wackes. Motion to do not, Counselor Udory, all those in favor? Thank you. And the Joint Fire Service, this is the end of a long process that started some time back, and is simply the October 31st, I believe, transfer of assets and the formal conclusion of the activities of the previous administrative structure. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Luke Smith? Mr. Allen?
And just to add to that, Mr. Mayor, what we're doing there is, the Fire Chief right now and I are going over the agreement. The agreement is antiquated in some respects, and I think the Fire Chief has identified several situations that must be addressed for the long term of the Fire Department, such as asset management, looking at the number of fire halls, it's a long-term plan for the Fire Department in our region is what he's talking about. So, I think that it, over the next little while, we'll have some further stuff, that agreement will come back to council, just as a housekeeping enemy.
This is a receipt for information. Counselor Kendall, all those in favor? And the final item this afternoon is the Phoenix Mountain situation. Request for financial support, an amount of $25,000 to ensure the continued operation of the mountain. And I'm gonna open this up with a comment or two here, we have been struggling to try and put this together with him, a couple of things have happened. The Boundary Economic Development Commission has formulated a letter to Lotteries, basically saying, you guys played very unfair here in terms of timeframes and how you brought this forward to the society, we'd like you to back that up, so you're not putting us up against the wall here, basically, and that will be signed by all of the region and municipalities. The other thing is that at the, at the level of the recreation meeting the other day, it was brought forward as an item to include in the recreation budget, that we allocate $20,000 in our recreation funding to the ski hill. Rowley Russell and the Region Area D are looking at incorporating the operation of the ski hill in a parks plan, and so these are all things that are really positive for the long run, but what we're facing here right now is the short-term crisis. So, what we did at our BEDC meeting is decide that we would put this back to our administration to look at and see what pieces they could cobble together to make this happen, so that's just bringing it a bit up to date. Counselor Watters?
So, Your Worship, I have a question of our CAO. In 17 years in the community, my husband has decided to now join the Phoenix Ski Hill Board of Directors, do I have to exclude myself as a conflict of interest?
Still living, Mr. Allen?
Fair.
Sorry. Hope that won't do it count.
Can I give you the answer before tonight's council meeting?
Yes, as I see it's.
I think at this point right now, there's no decisions being made on this at this point, I think with any decisions, if your husband was, you know, I'll have to get some legal things on that. But I think at this point right now, I think the discussion, the discussion is okay. If there's any decisions there, then I'm having to go to the legal thing.
Yeah, I see where we're at here at this point, we're basically throwing it back to our administration to try and work this out. Counselor?
Thank you. What I'm wondering is, I don't really see a timeframe on this one, when does a decision have to be made, what do they ask?
They're short, 47 or something, they're asking for $50,000 in finances from all of the players to try and keep operational. Mr. Allen, can you update us?
Yeah, the situation for us is, in this respect, when they're asking the city for money, again, this would almost be like a fee for service, because we can't directly support a business, we can't fund a business, you know, and if there, if it's a revenue stream, there's gonna be some challenges that we're going to foresee in there. I think the piece in here is looking at this from a regional perspective, when, you know, when the report comes back for timing, we need to understand a little bit more what the other partners are doing and how the regional district's looking at this. Because if they're looking at this as a park, if it's a non-for-profit organization, you know, it allows us to better understand what we can do and cannot do. But the timing of this, I would assume that they're going to need, without a little bit more clarity from the operators, is their specific request for timing. They are, they do have a letter dated October 29th, a little late in the year for us from a budgeting perspective, but ultimately, for us to fully understand and have them potentially come and provide the support pitch too, I think that they, they should be here, I mean, a simple letter, in my opinion, for this type of money is a pretty easy avenue, and I think that they should be coming in and talking to members of council at the structure, at the community. But I mean, that's just, I mean, this amount of money, but I think we need to have a little bit more understanding from the regional district and then the area director, so everybody in the room understands what's happening about this.
So, you know, it is premature, people are really putting their heads together to find a solution to this, but for us to make a decision on it is premature. So, do you want to step forward in the motion to do so? Counselor Udory, any questions on that? Solve the problem?
Yeah, we need to solve it.
At least give us some, some options in terms of what we might do here, after looking at the other players. All those in favor? All right, that's it from the agenda.
We have a wait item?
We did delay item, we moved it up earlier.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
So, how are you going to deal with the people who believe it's their God-given right to feed the deer?
That's what I want.
Well, I think that we're going to have to, first of all, talk to them. Hopefully, they will come to council and won't sidestep that opportunity. You know, I have heard from some of those people who know this is coming down the tubes, and they would like another opportunity to help the deer situation and to donate time or money towards alleviating or mitigating some of the deer problems. So, I think that's a challenge for the Deer Committee to possibly look at how they could use that enthusiasm for the welfare of the deer that these people are showing, to maybe find somewhere else that they can put their badly-directed energies into at this point that would be positive for the community and the deer population.
Like feeding up the school grounds and stuff like that?
Well, I think there are feeding places that we could look at, but that would have to be worked out between Conservation and city staff in terms of where a feeding station might work. Whether that's a long-term solution or not, I can't tell you. I'm not aware enough of the deer behavior.
If I just can make one comment, I don't think City Council is at all saying you can't feed the deer, and it's, we're taking away anyone's right to feed the deer. It's just, we're saying we prefer not to have that happen at city limits, that's all.
Okay. I'm prepared where you're going there. Yes, I mean, it would be nice not to have a battle with these people.
We don't want that.
And to be able to direct that energy.
Well, it's not just the city and those people, it's there's people in the neighborhood too. The people that live next to them and have the deer and the bear walking across their lawns and coming up to their property and say, well, where's my food?
No, I mean, the survey done recently by, I think it was Cranbrook or Kimberley, one of those communities, showed 75% support for again, reducing the herd. I think we had about the same level here of people when we did our survey four years ago. Councillor Crowe.
Yeah, if we could look at something like drawing them from the city core to set up safe feeding areas. I personally witnessed a fawn being basically run over outside of a lady who has a known feeding station in her yard, right? It's one of those things, you're thinking, oh, I'm going to feed the deer, and the next thing you know, the deer are dead, or suffering, actually, because it wasn't dead, and it had to be put down. So, you know, there's detriment to the animal. So, if there was a way that, as you say, we could direct their resources, if they want to put money into helping the deer, then maybe it's at a designated feeding station that keeps them safe.
Well, and certainly, you know, I think it's on the table, but whether it's practical or not, I can't say. Any further questions? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn. Councillor Doherty.